Somebody's conversation is coming across my microphone.
We're the county executives.
So before we dive in, whoever's talking about the schedule, I'd ask to mute for some of the reasons I'll talk about in my welcome. Okay, very good. So we're recording. Good morning and welcome to the May 9th meeting of the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority Board of Trustees. Hope everyone is able to join us using the go-to-meeting instructions that were provided. Just to note, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on our website. First, some ground rules for our meeting, as I started out saying, please mute your device when you're not speaking, so we can reduce background noise and not record whatever private conversations you may be having there on the side. When you are making a motion or a comment, please unmute and state your name, as well as where you're from, so that we know who you are. For those of you logged into the website or the app, please use chat box to indicate when you'd like to comment or ask a question, so that we can minimize the amount of people talking over one another. Ted will be monitoring the chat box. Does anyone have any questions about what I've said so far? Okay, I guess we're getting pretty good at this by now. To start the meeting, I'll ask Beverly Morris to read the Open Public Meetings Act and take the role. Beverly?
Okay, this is what it vies that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice that this meeting has been forwarded to the Newark Star-Ledger, the Asbury Park Press, the Corian News, the Daily Record, the Home News Tribune, the Jersey Journal, and the New Jersey Herald. Okay, now for the roll call. Bergen?
Peter Bosolis, present.
Essex?
David Antonio, present.
Hudson?
Iron Nicholas, present.
Hunterden?
Susan Salway.
Jersey City?
Do I excuse me, non-voting?
Okay, Middlesex?
Charlie Kenny, present.
Monmouth?
Harry O'Connor, present.
Morris?
Kathy Di Filippo, present.
Newark?
Philip Scott, present.
Ocean?
Jack Kelly, present.
Passaic?
John Bartlett, present.
Somerset?
Barasui, present.
Sussex?
Chris Carney, present.
Union?
Eddie Jane Kowalski, Union County.
Warren?
Jason Sernowski, Warren County here.
Governors of the authority unit?
Jeff Nielsen, present.
NJDOT?
Mike Russo, present.
NJ Transit?
Jeremy Colangelo, present.
What authority?
Jay Sheffield, here.
Citizens Representative?
Jared Rodriguez, present.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have nineteen voting members present and a four.
All right, very good. Thank you, Beverly. Let's move on to approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the March 14th board meeting? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
All operative minutes for approval.
Is that Ocean County?
Yes.
Thank you.
Union County, second.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, that brings us to the chair's remarks. I'd like to take this opportunity to present my report. Good morning and thank you for joining us for today's meeting. Before I give my remarks, I'd like to congratulate Morris County Commissioner Catherine Di Filippo, who will be honored one week from today with a Leadership Award from the Newark Regional Business Partnership. Kathy announced that she'll be retiring from elected office at the end of this year, and the award is a recognition of her work as a county commissioner, as well as her longtime service on the NJTPA Board and her recent time as Chair. Can we have a quick round of applause for Kathy?
Congratulations.
Thank you all for, thanks everyone who unmuted for clapping. Great work. As you know, we also have another pending retirement. Executive Director Mary Amin is leaving at the end of June. That means that today is her last board meeting, but I'm going to ask you to hold your applause and your congratulations for Mary until a bit later in our agenda. And finally, I also wanted to share that Hunterden County Commissioner Matt Holt retired on May 1st. Matt is a former board chair and has served for many years on our executive committee, while Commissioner Salo replaced him on the board earlier this year. He was the county's alternate member until he retired. I know all of us that got to work with Matt wish him the very best. I also want to take a moment to welcome Mitch Warren, Executive Director of the Northeast Corridor Coalition, who will be giving a presentation shortly on the future of the critical rail corridor. In other news, I wanted to let you know that the 2022 Federal Certification Review for the NJTPA is underway. Staff has responded to an initial request for information, and the onsite review has been scheduled. Representatives of the Federal Highway and Federal Transit Administration will be conducting the review in Newark from November 1st through 3rd of this year. I encourage all board members and staff from the subregions and agencies to participate in the certification review. I'm confident that the federal government will see the great work we're doing here at NJTPA, the nation's seventh-largest MPO, and give us an excellent report. You may recall that following our last certification review, we had one corrective action, which we addressed by adopting a Title VI Implementation Plan back in 2018. I wanted to share that staff recently updated the maps, charts, and statistics in that document to reflect the Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, that we adopted last year, as well as the results of the 2020 United States Census. On a related note, NJTPA has launched a new equity resources website to support our ongoing commitment to improving equity and ensuring that everyone in our region has access to our projects and programs. This website includes an equity analysis tool, which I encourage everyone at the NJTPA, our subregions, and our partners to explore. The tool is an interactive map, which allows us to quickly see the different populations living in a particular project area, community, or county, down to the census track level. This tool lets planners make the critical first step in recognizing the location of traditionally underrepresented populations, so that we can implement strategies for better engagement. You can find a link to the tool on our homepage at NJTPA.org. And if you'd like to learn more, I encourage you to attend the NJTPA's upcoming Tech Tools for Planning Expo on May 19. Before I wrap up my remarks, I also wanted to share that the NJTPA, in partnership with Sustainable Jersey and the Voorhees Transportation Center at Rutgers, has selected seven municipalities to receive complete streets technical assistance. This program provides pre-technical assistance such as conducting workshops on walkability, creating bicycle network plans and conceptual designs, and developing complete streets policies. In addition to the city of Passaic, in my home county, Belleville, Bound Brook, Donegal, Plainfield, Oakland, and Seaside Heights will be participating in this program. The program is a perfect example of how the NJTPA is working to put the principles of Plan 2050 into action at a local level. The plan calls for better walking and biking and wider implementation of complete streets across the region. This program helps turn that policy into reality in a wide variety of communities in the region. Additional information, as always, is available on the NJTPA's website. Finally, I wanted to remind everyone to join me at the virtual Morris Canal Working Group meeting on May 18. Staff will be giving an update on the Transportation Alternative Set-Aside Program, which we've used to fund Greenway projects for many years. This program is receiving additional funding under the Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, or IIJA, which should allow us to complete more projects in our region. Overall, New Jersey is expecting to see at least $13.5 billion in transportation funding as a result of this legislation over the next five years. Just last month, Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg announced $834 million for transit, the fourth-largest award in the country. As a reminder, the NJTPA is posting updates about IIJA funding opportunities at NJTPA.org/IIJA. Again, thank you to everyone for joining us today, and that concludes my report. Do we have any remarks from NJDOT this morning?
Good morning. Now, I will speak a little bit about Mary later on, but you know, I'm sorry to hear her leaving. I wish her the best on the next chapter of her life. Mary, you've been an incredibly valued and dependable partner, and you're going to sorely be missed. That's my only remarks for this morning. Thank you.
All right. I know we all agree on that. How about NJ Transit? Any remarks this morning?
Good morning, and certainly echo Mike's comments on Mary. And other than that, just looking forward to Mitch's talk a little later on. Thanks a lot.
Very good. Keep writing. Right, excuse me. Thank you very much, DOT and Transit. That brings us to letter E for those of you who are following on the agenda, and that is the Executive Director's Report. Mary, this is your final Executive Director's Report, and I'd ask you to present it to the board now.
Thank you. Hopefully you can all hear me. Please nod if you can. Great. I was having some, having a few little audio difficulties, but thank you so much. Let me just... Thank you for those kind words, and good morning, everyone. I'm happy to report that the Annual Transaction Conference in Atlantic City, held on April 26 through 28, went quite well. It was an in-person event for the first time since April of 2019, and it was, it was good to see so many of you there in person. As usual, the NJTPA played a very active role in the conference. Second Vice Chair Charles Kenny moderated two panels, one on IIJA and another on using the arts in public. Board Secretary Betty Jane Kowalski moderated a session on electric vehicles.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Could everyone who's not, Mary, please mute your line?
Um, okay, am I, I'm, I'm...
Yeah, Mary, please continue.
Trying. Oh, there you go. Okay, great. Thank you. So I was talking about the, about the transaction conference and the great attendance that we were, that we experienced and participation by, by our board and staff. And I think I had said that Betty Jane moderated a session on electric vehicles, and Commissioner Di Filippo also attended many of the sessions that we presented at. In addition, staff moderated or served on panels on topics including bike pedestrian trails, congestion management, complete streets, and the state's strategic highway safety plan. It was really encouraging to be back live and in person to exchange ideas, and I hope that we can all be cautiously optimistic about prospects for similar events in coming months. But I don't want to spoil anything by saying too much. A common theme that was heard throughout the conference, echoing Chairman Bartlet's remarks today, is that the funding and programs set in motion by the IIJA legislation represent an exceptional and historic opportunity for advancing transportation. We can all look to take advantage where we can over the five-year span of the law, and we really must. And doing so, of course, presents some challenges. Many of these programs require a local match, and preparing applications can be time-consuming at a time when public agencies are facing staff shortages and turnover. Despite these circumstances, the NJTPA is ready to help our subregions by sharing data, offering technical expertise for grant applications, and providing letters of support. The IIJA also presents challenges and opportunities for NJTPA's own operations. The legislation directs us to expand the scope of our planning activities, including in the areas of housing and resiliency. And in addition, we will be responsible for programming new projects and programs into the tip and for processing time-sensitive tip modifications and amendments to take full advantage of available federal funding. We'll be seeing, I should say, you'll be seeing many of these changes as soon as the next round of committee and board meetings. We're fortunate to have active and engaged board members to oversee this work through the standing committees. We also have staff with the experience and expertise, including a record of close cooperation with our planning partners to efficiently meet the demands of this new law. And on a related note, I'd like to mention that we have had some new staff join us in recent months, with hopefully more on the way. Adam Cuthbary joined our IT staff as database and application developer in late January, and just this month, we welcomed Mark Rivna, who's our new writer and editor, and working in our outreach group. As the chair mentioned, this fall, we are being called upon to demonstrate our capabilities and compliance with federal laws as part of the federal certification review of our metropolitan transportation planning process. This will be an opportunity for us to take stock of the progress we've made over the last four years, despite all of the challenges that we faced and are still facing. As mentioned, we have already provided preliminary information to FHWA and NFTA staff, who will be conducting the review. As in the past, there will be opportunities for trustees and stakeholders to participate in the process. One successful program that we will definitely be highlighting is the Planning for Emerging Centers Program, which provides planning assistance for municipalities. In past years, the program has supported Barrington Borough's Sustainable Economic Development Plan, Complete Streets Plans in Keyport and in Hoboken, and a Transit Village Initiative in Booton, among others. The deadline to apply for the next round of Planning for Emerging Centers Grants is May 16, and we'll be announcing the winners later this year. Turning to other planning activities, several efforts are wrapping up with the end of the fiscal year on June 30. We're finalizing the Regional On-Road Transportation Greenhouse Gas Inventory and Forecast, which provides important data for climate change planning. We'll also be conducting our Pedestrian Count Study, which you'll hear more about in the Planning and Economic Development Committee Report. Other studies are ongoing, including Active Transportation Plan, which will have its first advisory committee meeting tomorrow, and our enhancement of the PRIME Tool, which provides an interactive database of findings from past planning efforts, and is not related to Amazon. Also, as we head towards the summer, a number of communities along the shore and elsewhere will be undertaking Street Smart pedestrian campaigns, posting advisories along main routes and distributing information to promote safe behavior by both drivers and pedestrians. These communities include Seakin, Little Silver, Long Beach Island, and Manasquan, where the Southern Ocean Chamber of Commerce will be distributing the materials. Many campaigns are assisted by transportation management associations, and anyone interested in learning more about conducting a Street Smart campaign can visit bestreetsmartnj.org for more information. And finally, a few upcoming events. The annual NJTPA Planning Tools Expo will take place on May 19. Information is on our website. And the Metropolitan Area Planning Forum, or MAP Forum, of which we are a member along with nine other MPOs across four states, will be holding its spring meeting virtually on June 3. As with the other events, the details will be available on our website. And that concludes my, my report for today, and I guess this is my final report. So thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you very much, Mary. Very, very informative. That brings us to our presentation. And next, I'm pleased to introduce Mitch Warren, who has been since 2011 the Executive Director of the Northeast Corridor Commission. Prior to that, Mitch was Senior Policy Advisor for the U.S. Senate Committee on Banking, Housing, and Urban Affairs. Please welcome Mitch and his very interesting presentation for us today.
Hey, great. Thanks. Appreciate that. And in fact, my, my first job in the Senate was for Senator Lautenberg. I grew up in Mercer County, so love getting a chance to, to visit. Hopefully be able to start doing that more in person again. But have, have, over my life, taken many Amtrak, New Jersey Transit, and Septa trains out of the Trenton train station. So a very familiar place. And I appreciate you guys inviting me to talk today about the commission. I have a few slides that I'll go through to give a little background on the commission itself and on the Connect NEC 2035 planning exercise that we completed and are continuing to, to work on and update. But just the, the first slide's just a little background on the corridor that I'm sure all of you are very familiar with. If you can go ahead to the first slide. Thanks. You know, you're all familiar with the importance of the corridor to the region, you know, pre-pandemic. Over 2,000 trains a day carried over 800,000 passengers a day. That's, that's primarily commuter passengers, also quite a few Amtrak passengers there. And the corridor is, not everybody appreciates its complexity. You know, I'm sure that you're all far more familiar with this than most, but you know, those 2,000 trains a day are operated by eight different commuter agencies. Amtrak operates intercity trains. There are a number of freight railroads that operate trains on the corridor. And there are four different infrastructure owners on the corridor. So it's a, it's a busy, important, and complex corridor, and all those trains are operating over aging infrastructure, bridges and tunnels that are well over 100 years old. Where we have a multi-billion dollar stated good repair backlog. There hasn't been significant investment in the corridor in most of our lifetimes. I mean, since, since World War II, we've really seen underinvestment in the corridor. Since Amtrak got it in 1976, it's never had the, the funding available to address the stated good repair backlog or, or invest as much as needed to, to not only address stated good repair, but to address some of the capacity needs, some modernization needs, reduce the trip times. So Congress, seeing that the corridor wasn't on a sustainable path, authorized creation of the Northeast Corridor Commission. And if you go to the next slide, I can walk through some of the commission members. We have eighteen voting members, one appointed by the governor of each of the states, from Massachusetts down to the District of Columbia. Kevin Corbett is our state co-chair. And he and all the folks at New Jersey Transit have been, been very engaged in what we're doing, very constructive players. So we really, really appreciate that, that partnership with, with Kevin and Jeremy and Joe and, and you know, so many others at New Jersey Transit. New York MTA also very, very engaged, as are all the other surrounding states. So we have one from each of the states. That's nine voting members on the commission. Then the next slide shows the other nine voting members. We have five appointed by the Secretary of Transportation. And Amit Bose, the Federal Rail Administrator, is the US DOT co-chair with, with Kevin Corbett. And then we have four appointed by the CEO of Amtrak, led by Steven Gardner, who, as you know, is now CEO of Amtrak and is the, the one remaining original commissioner from when the commission's first meeting over 10 years ago. So he's, he has a lot of background there, and it's helpful to have somebody who's, who's been around from the beginning. So we have eighteen voting members, nine from the states, nine representing US DOT and Amtrak. We, if you go to the next slide, when we were created by Congress, we had a statutory mandate to develop a formula to allocate costs on the corridor. And we spent a number of years in pretty intense negotiations developing what started off as a formula became a policy with three pillars. And I'll walk, briefly walk through each of those, just so you can sort of understand the commission and where we're coming from. On the cost sharing, we allocate about $1.3 billion a year in shared operating and normalized replacement capital costs. So on the operating side, it's things like the maintenance of way and dispatching, policing. All shared costs, we allocate it based on usage. And on the normalized replacement capital side, same thing. We, we allocate costs for, for track and signal systems and electric catenary system, undergrade bridges, the capital renewal work that needs to be, be done. We have a formula that allocates that based on, on usage, based on things like gross ton miles and train movements and, and things like that. Depending on, on the cost item we're allocating, there's different allocators, but it's always based on, on usage. So that's, that's the first pillar and a key pillar that, that brings in significant amount of money a year and has helped to create some stability to the corridor's funding levels. The second pillar, since that first pillar meant a lot of agencies are going to be investing more money in the Northeast Corridor, they wanted to make sure that they had a more of a partnership with, with Amtrak in the decision-making, more transparency, more accountability, more collaboration. So we do a, an annual five-year capital plan that we've, we're continuing to try and improve and make more collaborative. We do an annual report that looks at the operating performance on the corridor, that looks at the implementation of the one-year capital plan. I will talk in a, in a few minutes about the longer-term planning exercise that we have undertaken, which has, has taken on increased significance with the passage of the Infrastructure Bill. And the third pillar of this is the need for a federal partnership. It was important to our members, who were going to be investing more in the corridor, that the federal government also step up and invest more, that the, you know, the states on their own aren't going to be able to address this, this very significant stated good repair backlog, significant need for improvement, capacity needs in the corridor. They needed a federal partner to do that. And fortunately, with the Infrastructure Bill, and I'll get to that in a little bit, but you know, we now do have a great partnership on its way with, with the federal government. The next slide talks about, shows just background on the Connect NEC 2035 planning effort that we've undertaken. Some of you probably remember the NEC Future Planning Exercise. It was a multi-year exercise led by the Federal Railroad Administration. That was a tier-one EIS. And that was really a, a long-term vision for the future of the corridor. What we have done with Connect NEC 2035 is try and develop the first phase of NEC Future, focused on the first 15 years. What can we achieve in the next 15 years? And that was more of a ground-up, you know, project-level-based planning approach. And if you go to the next slide, you know, we really focused on looking at track outages and sequencing projects. One of the significant limitations for investing money in the corridor, obviously the biggest has always been money, and workforce is, is, as it turns out, a significant one as well. But you know, a significant limitation to investment is getting track time, and it's such a busy corridor. And even now, where most of the agencies are back to, you know, close to pre-pandemic service levels. So you know, even the ridership is still down some. The, the, most of the train movements are back, and it's, it's very busy. It's hard to get track time, and that limits, even with unlimited funding, there's only so much you can invest in the corridor each year because you have to take tracks out of service, which disrupts trains, causes canceled trains, late trains, you know, very frustrating to, to customers, even though it's, it's obviously in, in the long run, is going to make the service better and more reliable. So what we looked at was how can you most effectively sequence this so that we can make the maximum productivity out of each track outage to make sure that, you know, sometimes now, if there's not enough planning, you might take a track. you might take a track out of service for a certain period of time. And then two years later, it's out of service again to do something different because maybe the commuter agency had work it had to do and it wasn't coordinated with the work Amtrak had to do. And so you have multiple track outages where you could have all done it at the same time. So we're trying to, by coordinating all this planning, making sure that the track outages are maximizing the impact, maximizing the productivity, minimizing the service impacts of each of these track outages. So that was an important factor in, in Connect NEC 2035. If you go to the next slide, we released that last summer, had a press conference at Moynihan Train Hall, which was the first time I had been there since it opened, you know, beautiful place, to announce this with, with a number of our members. Kevin Corbett was there, Steven Gardner from Amtrak, Amit Bose, Nury Fernandez, others from FRA from New York, Joe July from Connecticut. We introduced this and it's a long-term plan. We really focused on state of good repair. The biggest benefits are going to be reliability, but there's also going to be trip time benefits. We're going to see new capacity, which is going to allow us over, over time, it's going to take some time to increase the frequency of, of train service as well. So the, the next slide shows the importance of modernizing the infrastructure. We do an annual report each year and we look at what's causing the delays on the quarter each year. And you can see consistently infrastructure failures are the number one cause of delays on the quarter. And it's going to take time. That's not going to be fixed overnight. It's going to take years, but as we replace these aging bridges, bridges and tunnels, as we renew the track infrastructure, the modernize the signal systems, the electric catenary system, we're going to see significant reliability improvements. So we're going to see some pain in the, in the near term as there are more track outages to address this. And that's some of the, the planning work that we're doing with all the agencies to figure out the best way to do that. But we are going to see, we're expecting to see significant reliability improvements over the years as we modernize the quarter. If you go to the next slide, get a chance to talk about the Infrastructure Bill. And all, all of this has been, you know, these have been planning exercise based on no money, right? It's, it's demonstrating what funded is needed, but there's never been any, any funding, any significant funding for the quarter. We, Congress has been more generous over the past 10 years or so. There has been more consistent funding and hey, you know, I'm sure many of you remember 15, 20, 25 years ago, Amtrak was always on the brink of bankruptcy and it really had no money, no capital dollars to do a proactive capital investment. That's changed over the years. It hasn't been nearly enough, but over the past five to 10 years, it's been much better. This infrastructure bill is, is a game changer and just, we have some highlights of some of the programs here. The, the most important ones of federal-state partnership program that has approximately 24 billion over five years for the quarter. It's a lot of money. It's not enough to do everything that needs to be done over the next 15 years, but it's an important start. Amtrak has 6 billion for their Northeast Quarter account. And then there are other programs that, that may have grant opportunities for the Northeast Quarter, the Chrissy Program, the CIG Program out of FTA, which is funding the Hudson Tunnels and the Portal Bridge. There's this new mega program for, for major infrastructure projects. There's the Raze Program. There's, there's other programs that may potentially have some funding opportunities for the Northeast Quarter. So that's going to be a significant opportunity over the next number of years for all of our members to go after dollars, to actually move these, these projects forward. And, and if you go to the next slide, as a result of the Infrastructure Bill and, and the money that's now out there, you know, that's, that's changed everything. We did C-35, not knowing there was going to be an Infrastructure Bill. Our, our timing was very fortunate and we were able to show Congress the need. And so C-35 was, there was no funding when we did it. It was, we're trying to show the need. And we, we didn't constrain it by funding. We didn't constrain it by workforce. We did take it, cut it, constrain it by track outage needs. So as a result of the Infrastructure Bill, the federal-state partnership program requires the Federal Railroad Administration to do, to create a Northeast Quarter project inventory. And then that project inventory will inform the grants that the Federal Railroad Administration gives out, once agencies apply for, for the dollars that are provided annually through the Fed State Partnership Program. So we realized that we're going to have to do an update of our plan so that the FRA has the latest information available in order to create its project inventory and, and give out its grants. So we're in the process of working on a C-35 update, trying to take a look at the challenges posed by the need to ramp up the workforce. You know, we're not going to be able to do all the work that we'd like to do because it's going to take time for all these agencies that have been underfunded for so many years, particularly Amtrak, to ramp up the size of its workforce, both the labor and management sides. That's a significant endeavor and we're still trying to figure out, you know, what's the best estimate of, of how long that will take and, and what does that mean for the, the project list going forward? So we're going to update our delivery analysis, try and constrain it by, by workforce needs, at least to the best of our ability this year. And then next year in C-37, which our plan has been to do these updates every two years, in C-37, we'll have even better information and we'll again take a cut at, at further constraining by, by workforce ramp up and, and project readiness and, and funding needs and everything. So we are in the process now of, of updating this plan. That's a 2022 endeavor. In 2023, we will work on C-37 in, in the next iteration. The update is, is more of an internal document. It'll be used to inform FRA. We're not going to do C-35. We have a, a big report that we put out, which is on our website. We're not planning the same big report for the C-35 update. We'll do that again for, for C-37. And if you go to the next slide, the, well, here's, just shows you where, where the information's available on our website. So that's a quick introduction to the Northeast Quarter Commission, to the Connect NEC planning process that is ongoing. I'm happy to, to answer questions that you may have.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Mitch. That was very, that was very informative. For me, as an occasional rider, good to know what I have to look forward to. Does any members of, do any members of the board have any questions for Mitch? You can either raise your hand or post your question in the chat. Ted, are there, are there any other questions for Mitch in the chat box?
No, not at this time, Chairman.
So let me just briefly open the floor to anybody. I realize I asked board members. Anybody else wants to pose a question to Mitch Warren before we let him go? Okay. Well, Mitch, take that as a compliment on your thoroughness and appropriate level of detail. Thank you again very much for joining us and being part of this program. It's very helpful for us to have the national and, and big regional context, along with the regional context that we have here at NJTPAs. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. And we appreciate you giving me the opportunity to talk to you.
Absolutely. All right. Well, for those of you following along on the agenda, that brings us to letter G. I'm sorry, did somebody, okay. Letter G is committee reports. So I'm going to begin by calling on Commissioner John Kelly to give the Project Prioritization Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And before I give my report, I have one question for you on my report. Do you want me to stop after each of the action items to vote on it? Or do you want me to give the entire report and come back to vote on the action items one at a time?
Why don't you go ahead, Commissioner, and ask, ask for the votes on each action item as you go?
Okay, that's what I'll do. Thank you, sir.
Do you, do you have the, do you have notes on who is moving?
I do not. If I stop, then whoever's doing that can ask for the.
Since I have the, since I have those in front of me, why don't you stop after each action item and I'll call the vote?
I will do that. Thank you, Chairman. I'm pleased to report today on the activities of the Project Prioritization Committee. At the joint meeting in April, the committee considered four action items. First, the committee approved a list of projects selected for the 2022 Safe Routes to School Program. NJDOT issued a solicitation for this funding opportunity last May, and a total of 41 eligible applications were received for projects in the NJTPA region. A technical review committee reviewed the applications and recommended 22 safe routes to school projects totaling $13.8 million for implementation. This is listed as action item one. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much. So as I mentioned a moment ago, in the interest of simplifying board action during online meetings, we've asked some board members to be prepared to offer a motion in a second. So on action item number one, I understand that Hudson County would like to move this item?
Yes, Hudson County will make a motion to move this item.
Thank you. Bergen County, will you second?
Bergen County seconds the motion.
Any comments from the board members on action item number one? Any comments from members of the public on action item number one? All right. Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Okay, thank you. Next, the committee considered a minor amendment to the current tip to add the Route 57 slash 182 slash Hackensett Mobility Improvements Project in Warren and Morris Counties. The New Jersey Department of Transportation requested the programming of $5.89 million in congestion mitigation and air quality funds for the project's construction phase in fiscal year 2022. The funding is available from released program funds. This is listed as action item two, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I understand Warren County would like to move this item.
Warren County will make a motion.
And Morris, will you second?
Yes, Morris will second that. Thank you.
Very good. Any comments from the board members? Or from members of the public? Hearing none. Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT? NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you, Beverly. We'll move on to action item three, which is a minor amendment to add federal funds to the Route 22 Bridge over Echo Lake Project in Union County. State funds have been appropriated for this project in the 2021 NJDOT Capital Program, but the agency has requested federalizing the program funding with $10.36 million in bridge formula program funds for construction in fiscal year 2022. Mr. Chairman?
All right. I understand that Union County would like to move this item.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, Union County makes the motion.
Thank you. And will Essex County second?
Yes, Essex second.
Very good. Any comments from the board members? Or from members of the public on this action item? Okay, Beverly, please call the roll.
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you, Beverly. And action item four, a minor amendment to the current tip to add federal funds to four projects and one program. New Jersey Transit requested this minor amendment to reprogram unobligated prior fiscal year funding into the constrained 2022 tip. The funds are available but programmed outside constrained years. Pursuant to federal transit administration requirements, the funds need to be moved into the appropriate year to be authorized. There is no change in the amount of funding, just a shift into the 2022 element of the current tip. The subject projects and program are as follows. Hudson-Bergen and Newark LRT System Project in Hudson County, $4.82 million. New Brunswick Station Platform Extension and Elevator Improvement in Middlesex County, $9.89 million. Lackawanna Cut-off MOS Project, $50.49 million. Light Rail Vehicle Rolling Stock Program, $7.17 million. Perth-Anboy Intermodal ADA Improvement Project in Middlesex County, $55.35 million. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you very much. I understand that New Jersey Transit would like to move this item.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, New Jersey Transit moves.
Very good. And Monmouth County, will you second?
Yes, Monmouth will second.
All right, that opens the floor to any comments from board members? Or from members of the public? Very good. Beverly, would you call the roll?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you, Beverly. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you very much, Commissioner. That was a good tag-team effort there, running through those action.
Yeah, it was.
That, that brings us to Planning and Economic Development. So I'm going to ask Commissioner Charles Kenny to give the committee report for PED.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. And before I get started, congratulations to Mary. While you're closing this chapter, you get to start writing another chapter in your book, so I wish you the best. Um, thank you. I am pleased to report on the activities of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. The committee did not consider any action items at the April joint meeting, but central staff provided an overview of federal developments. The committee also received a number of written information items. Much of what we heard about new federal funding and grant opportunities has been mentioned by the chair and the executive director. This includes a much-needed infusion of additional funding for New Jersey Transit as part of the legislation's overall support for critical infrastructure. This includes many new competitive grant opportunities, as well as significant increases in formula funding for various programs, which will boost our existing efforts to enhance roads, bridges, transit, and walking and biking facilities. These are welcome developments. Also at the meeting, central staff briefed the committee on the NJTPA's pedestrian count study, which grew from a need to assess pedestrian volumes in the region in a comprehensive way. Last fall, count data was collected at over a hundred intersections in the region. Data analysis and refinement is in progress, and the project will continue in June. The data can be used in various regional planning activities, including work, including work to better accommodate and improve safety for walkers and bikers. It is very much, it very much supports the NJTPA's Regional Active Transportation Plan, now under development, as well as the goals of Plan Two Thousand Fifty. This concludes the report for the Economic Planning and Economic Development Committee. I thank you, Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner. That brings us to Freight Initiatives. I'm going to call on Commissioner Jason Sarnoski to give the committee report.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And before I begin, I want to echo everyone's comments on Mary Amin and congratulations on her retirement. She's been a great executive director and, you know, was brave enough to do the job with me on the executive committee, which I give her a lot of credit for. She always answered the phone whenever I called and worked impeccably. So, you know, and before her, we had Mary Kay. So it's going to be, I really hope we either hire a new executive director with the first name Mary or whoever we hire doesn't mind being called Mary, because that's what I remember from my twelve years serving on this board. But to get on with my Freight Initiatives Committee comments, I am pleased to report on the April meeting of the Freight Initiatives Committee, where we heard our annual New Jersey Port and Maritime update. Our first speaker was Sam Ruda, Director of the Port Authority's Port Department. He reported that current container traffic at the port is eight to ten percent higher than the record level seen in two thousand twenty-one and continues to grow. He said this growth is being driven by a massive change in personal consumption, favoring goods over services, a trend that accelerated as people ordered online during the pandemic. Also, shippers facing congestions, backlogs, and labor negotiations at West Coast ports are shifting an increasing share of the commerce to the East Coast. As a result, terminals are operating at full or nearly full capacity. He did note, however, that the port faces shortages of truck drivers, chasses, and other constraints. Next, we heard from John Nardi, the president of the New York Shipping Association. He informed us that the growth in volume at the port has spurred a strong demand for workers at the maritime terminals, requiring the hiring of hundreds more workers. Mr. Nardi said that the association is working with the Council on Port Performance to conduct outreach to potential workers at communities in Newark, Elizabeth, and surrounding areas. Mr. Nardi noted that New Jersey has been seeking to withdraw from the Waterfront Commission and turn its oversight of hiring functions over to New Jersey State Police, which would expedite the hiring process. However, the state of New York is attempting to block the withdrawal through legal action and could reach, and this could reach the Supreme Court. The committee then heard from Christopher A. Watson, planning official for the city of Newark. He briefed us on the new redevelopment effort called Forward Bound Duramus. The effort focused on five districts adjacent to Newark's Duramus Avenue. Mr. Watson said the project seeks to cultivate a reciprocal relationship that would link port business to local neighborhoods and nearby commercial activities while redevelopment efforts attract new port-related businesses. Among the member reports at the meeting, NJDOT noted that the two thousand twenty-two update of the FHWA Required State Freight Plan is underway with participation by the NJTPA and other stakeholders. This concludes the Freight Initiatives Committee report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner. So that brings us to letter H, Public Participation. Please request to comment or ask questions in the chat box or wait until we call for comments for those of you who have dialed in on your phones. Also, please remember to mute yourselves when you're not speaking. And as a reminder, we advise members of the public that we have a three-minute time limit on comments. The time will be displayed on the screen while each person is talking. Ted, have any members of the public signed up in advance to speak at today's meeting?
Yes, Commissioner, one person, Neil Weisman from Complete George.
Okay, great. Why don't we begin with Neil and we'll take a look in the chat box?
Okay. Director Amin Sherman Bartlett, trustees, good afternoon. My name is Neil Weisman. I head up Complete George. A link to extended remarks has been posted in the, in the chat. They are being, they are on your screen. They could also be viewed online at completegeorge.org. Click the link to South Path Plan. As shown in image number one, the Port Authority is expected to open the rebranded North Walk when it moves the recabling project to the south later this year. The agency will then face a choice. It can allow thousands of pedestrians and cyclists to share a facility not half as wide as needed to support safe operation, or it can make everyone walk the sole bikeable connector between New York City and North Jersey. Today, I offer two plans to address the problem, one quick, the other permanent. Image number two depicts a catwalk now deployed along the South Path. It is cantilevered outside the upper supports and is fenced in by orange safety net. Access is by a short flight of stairs at each end. This catwalk can form the basis for a limited-use bikeway. The Quick Fix entails spanning the cantilevers with lightweight fiberglass decking and redeploying the safety net, which is now strung above the upper level. Access would remain by stairs. The path is just wide enough for a one-way operation, but the agency would have new capacity to manage demand on the North Walk during periods of peak use. Image number three shows a permanent ten-foot-wide bikeway running below the upper deck supports. The bikeway routes through the towers following the same track as the upper walkway. The two paths would merge at new access ramps. Because the suspension cables, which choke down the upper path every sixty feet, don't extend to, don't extend down to the bikeway, cyclists can use the full ten-foot width. The new bikeway is sheltered from fall and ice, which is a principal cause for closure during the winter. And containing the path within the existing structure should simplify design and reduce cost. I've asked the agency to vet these proposals, including the potential for external funding. The limitations of the current design will hobble the growth of cycling across the region for a generation. And if you factor the durable benefits resulting from a robust connector and the broad public's support, the agency should have a competitive application. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much, Neil, and kudos on fitting that to just shy of three minutes. Clearly, you practiced. That brings us to, that brings us back into the public comment period, I should say. Ted, has anyone else used the chat box to indicate that they would like to comment?
So far, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do we have anyone who's dialed in on the phone who would like to make comments? If so, just go ahead and unmute yourself and speak up. Okay. Well, hearing no one, that brings us to the end of the public comment period. And before we adjourn, I mentioned earlier we would have a few words to say about our outgoing executive director, Mary Amin. Mary has served as executive director since October twenty eighteen and has been with us since two thousand six. She has been a steady hand guiding the NJTPA staff and working with the board to oversee and approve literally billions of dollars of investments in our region. Through her day-to-day leadership, she's encouraged the NJTPA's innovative planning programs in cooperation with partner agencies, subregions, and TMAs. Perhaps above all, Mary's leadership enabled the NJTPA to continue its operations and even thrive through the difficult time of the pandemic. We couldn't have asked for a more capable leadership at such a critical period. For that and more, I'd like to thank Mary on behalf of the board and wish her all the best in her retirement. As a small token of our appreciation, we have a plaque to present to Mary. It reads, "The Board of Trustees of the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority presents this plaque to Mary D. Amin in recognition of her distinguished leadership and public service during sixteen years as NJTPA Executive Director, Deputy Executive Director, and Director of External Affairs. Through her active leadership, the NJTPA helped address regional needs, safety, mobility, equity, resiliency, technology, and more. Her dedication to increased collaboration, inclusive public outreach, and communication raised the profile of the NJTPA. And through her guidance in developing the NJTPA's Long Range Plan Two Thousand Fifty Transportation People Opportunity, helped prepare the North Jersey region for a promising future." And since we are meeting virtually today, Dave is delivering the plaque to Mary on my behalf. And I understand that we have a few other board members who would like to say a few words. So as you wish, members of the board, go ahead and speak up.
Black, real time.
Hi, this is Commissioner Kathy Di Filippo. If I could have a moment? I also would like to thank Mary for her excellent leadership for the NJTPA, particularly during the last two years when I served as chair. Many of you know that I became, was elected chair in January of two thousand twenty. I was able to preside over just one public meeting before the reality was we went to, we all were told to stay home. In any event, during that time, the world went upside down, but Mary managed to keep our boat floating. It was an uncertain and very scary time, but, you know, Mary was able to muster the resources and work with the staff. She helped to make that transition to remote work and virtual meetings much easier. This kept, which was imperative, that the NJTPA continued to function and be able to continue all the vital work that we do to support regional transportation. So Mary, I'm grateful for your advice, for your counsel, as we worked together during that crazy time with all the unprecedented, unimaginable challenges that we faced. But looking back, I think you made, we made a great team. With, with your help, with the help of all of your staff, you accomplished a lot. We all did. Let's, we, we accomplished Plan Two Thousand Fifty, the new Transportation Improvement Program. We introduced the world to public comment virtually by able to continue to do our work out in the field. So Mary, I thank you for all you did for me as the chair over the past two years and obviously prior to that, as we worked together on the executive board. As I look forward to retiring and winding down at the end of the year for my public service, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for all that you've done for me and for the board, and I want, want to wish you all the best in your retirement, Mary, and may God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't know if I should speak now or wait until.
Let's give a couple other folks a moment, Mary. Somebody else trying to chime in?
Hi, Mary. This is Jeff Nielsen from the Governor's Office. I want to thank you for your strong leadership and wish you the best as you move forward in the next chapter. I know wherever you go, you'll be successful in both your professional and personal life. And I wish you Godspeed. Again, thanks for everybody from the Governor's Office and the people of the state of New Jersey. You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Chairman, can I chime in here? Betty Jane Kowalski, Union County. Thanks. Mary, I'd like to thank you for your leadership through what we all know has been a very challenging period. And I, I can see that your calm and focused guidance of the staff and the board and all our partners has really steered us through the pandemic and toward completing a lot of major projects that are improving transportation in the lives of millions of New Jersey residents. So being from Union County, I particularly appreciate your help with projects here, but I know that you've given every eligible project your thoughtful attention and support. And so I just want to thank you, Mary, and wish you a very happy and healthy retirement.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is a blast from the past, Mary. It's Mary Kay?
All right.
I don't know if my camera's on or not. I can't figure this out. But anyway, Mary, Dave told me I heard through the grapevine, and then we talked a little bit when I heard about your retirement, and I couldn't resist the chance to just say congratulations. But to make sure I also said thank you, because I don't know if I said that enough over our many years of working together. We've known each other for a lot of years, but by far the best part was when we got to work together for my ten years at NJTPA. You were always professional. You're always insightful and expert in so many areas, in engineering and project management and best business practices. But mostly what I remember about you is how you viewed all of us with a caring and compassion lens. And that made, you know, such a difference in how we functioned as, as an agency. I learned so much from you, and I wanted to, you know, thank you for that and, you know, let you know that when I did move over to where I am now over at the Port Authority a few years back, I knew that the agency was in the best hands possible. So for that and for so many reasons, I want to thank you and certainly congratulate you and, you know, look forward to a glass of wine on your deck in the Poconos one of these days. So congratulations and all the very, very best.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
That sounds very nice. Anybody, anybody else? I'm not trying to, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not angling for an invitation. I'm just saying that that sounds lovely you're sitting here in the office on a Monday morning.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just echo everyone else's best wishes to Mary. Certainly, you have been such a good professional and certainly have guided me and all the members so graciously and always treated all of us with such deep respect. And I really appreciated all of that and wish you well in your future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have to interject now because I'm going to forget what I, what I was going to say. But thank you. First of all, this was a really hard decision, and it was, it was an agonizing decision, but it ultimately is the right one. And for some of the reasons that Kathy mentioned and that Mary Kay mentioned, you know, I, I, anything I did, you know, it was because I had the support and the trust of the people around me. Um, if you perceived me in a certain way, um, whether it was calm or having leadership or having skills, it's because, um, I perceive you in the same way, that there was support, that there was, um, respect. There was a willingness to, to, um, get the job done. And that's, that carried us through so many difficulties, especially in the last couple of years. But, but, you know, life and work have never been a cakewalk. There are always, there are always, um, obstacles. And, uh, it's been my, it's been my honor to work with people that have been so supportive and, and collegial. Um, you spoiled me. Um, I've been in transportation my entire career, and the, the, the special, um, aspects of, of, of a planning agency are that people are by, you know, by nature, thoughtful, forward-thinking, and caring about the, 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 the quality of life of, of everybody in the region. And that, that rubs off and it becomes a, a kind of guiding, um, a guiding principle. And so, uh, it's, you know, believe me, I've, I've learned, um, much more from, from you than, than, uh, than maybe I, you know, gave back. I, it's, it's been, it's been a very, very wonderful time. Um, and again, it, it was, uh, you know, it was all of you that made me look good. Um, the staff's been wonderful, uh, Dave, my executive, uh, the rest of the executive team, um, Beth and Angel and Jeff and, and the, the entire leadership team, you know, communicate well, get along well. We, you know, we know what we need to do and, and we figure out how to do it. Um, could not have done, the NJTPA could not have done all those, all those wonderful things that, that, uh, Commissioner DeFilippo mentioned without the, without the staff, without the people a, and the partnerships that, that, that made that happen. Um, so I, you know, I'm, I'm humble. I said it before. I'm, I'm humbled by the, you know, by the kindness of, of everyone's words. Um, could not hope to find a better staff anywhere, could not hope to find a better and more engaged Board. The Board members have been, have been, uh, just so supportive, um, both before, um, the pandemic, before I became Executive Director, just, it's been part of the culture, part of the, part of the DNA of this, of this organization, and I'm, and I'm grateful for that. Um, I'm sure there are things I'm forgetting to say in my, you know, in my emotional state, uh, right now, but, um, I, I just, uh, I just love you all and thank you all. And, uh, you know, and, and my project and funding partners and stakeholders across all of the other agencies, um, have also, um, made, made this job a joy. So if I left anybody out, it's, uh, it's the, uh, it's, it's, it's on me, but I want it to be an inclusive thank you, and, uh, I, I wish everyone the best of luck. And, uh, yeah, wine on the porch sounds like a good idea. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank, thank you, Mary. I mean, uh, uh, I would say the plaque says it all, but the plaque says so much I can barely read it on my screen. But, uh,
Black is beautiful. Black is love. Thank you.
It's been, uh, it's been really extraordinary. Um, uh, you know, I was part of the process by which you were, were selected. Um, and, uh, uh, 2018 feels like a really, really long time ago, uh, right now, even though it's just four years. You really, uh, helped this entire organization, whether, um, you know, really generational, uh, challenges. And you put us in a place where now, uh, you know, as we've got a once-in-a-generation federal investment, uh, coming into our region, we are just ready to, to make the most of it, uh, not just as, as this Board, but all the subregions, uh, and organizations that make up this Board are in the position, position that they are, uh, because, uh, of your work and because of how, uh, we came through this, this ordeal, uh, as an organization. So, uh, very much, uh, on behalf of the entire Board, thank you again. Um, uh, you're with us until, uh, the end of June, but this is your last meeting, so we certainly wanted to recognize you. Uh, so that the Board is aware, the search for Mary's successor, uh, has begun. I believe the listing is out. If it isn't already, then it certainly will be very shortly. Uh, it will be at least the summer as we go through that process. Uh, so after, uh, July 1, uh, David Barron will step in as Exact, Acting, uh, Executive Director of the Organization, uh, to carry us through the summer, through the search process, uh, and, uh, make sure that, uh, uh, there is continuing steady hand, uh, as this Board moves forward and our subregions move forward to do more great things, uh, thanks to the base that you built, Mary. So thank you again for that. I'm going to close us out by announcing the time and place of our next meeting, uh, which is, again, going to be a virtual meeting of this Board, Monday, July 11th, 2022, at 10:30 in the morning. Um, and with that, I, uh, going to look for a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Kathy DeFilippo will move that motion.
Thank you, Kathy. Do we have a second?
Union County will second.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, all right. Well, all in favor, say aye, and then disconnect. Have a wonderful night.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you all.
Thank you.